Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge of the flag. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There have been no executive-- I don't have my sound on.
Thanks, Mark.
There have been no executive sessions since our last meeting, so at this point, I would like to move on to communication from citizens. So I will open up the floor to anybody that would like to come forward and address the board. Anybody who happens to be on Zoom can click the raise hand button to be recognized. If you come forward to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and then make your comments directed to the board, please. Anyone? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Warren Weaver. I'm at 4135 Campbell A Drive here in York. I'm here today because of the traffic situation at East Market and Mount Zion Road while they've been doing construction. The constrictions in the lanes seem totally inappropriate to me based on the work that's going on there. I think it could have been done a lot better. I don't know how much more construction is going on, but the lane restrictions are significant, particularly if you're coming north on Edgewood into that intersection. The traffic restricted down to the left turn lane only. It's five lanes wide at the intersection. Only one was allowed to go through, and they didn't adjust the traffic lights. So when the left arrow is green, people go both ways, and when it's red, they stop if they're trying to make a left turn, and then all the traffic is backed up. And it was way, way bad while Kensington was doing all that, I guess it's gas pipeline installation. I don't know what they're doing, if it's related to Mount Zion Commons or some other work that they're doing there. But someone needs to take a look at that, because if that's going to continue through that whole Mount Zion Commons project, you're going to have a lot more complaints than just me standing up here today. So I just want to make you all aware of that, so someone can take a look at it. I did stop in the day it was really bad and talked to one of your local policemen here in the township. He recommended that I come by and see you folks tonight, which is why I'm here. I don't know that I have anything else to add, but if you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I think we're fairly well aware of how difficult that situation's been. Mark, do we have any idea how much longer that will be going on?
I don't have any idea, and just to clarify, Kensington's doing the work on Mount Zion Road, which is a PennDOT roadway. And when they first started the work, I contacted PennDOT to make sure that Kensington was doing everything per the permit that they issued, and they said that they were. So the township unfortunately doesn't have any jurisdiction over that roadway. It's between Kensington and PennDOT.
Can we relay to PennDOT our concerns? Because I've noticed the same thing. I mean, I'm a resident here, too. I drive through that intersection, and it hasn't been pleasant. It looks like there's little regard for flow of traffic when they're doing their lane restrictions.
I will let them know again--
That is my personal observation.
I will definitely let them know again, but that's the response I got from PennDOT back in May or June.
So I feel your pain. I understand.
When you're coming west on East Market Street, they had it blocked off, so it looked like you weren't even supposed to do a right-hand turn there. They were directing traffic on the opposite side of the median--
Yeah.
--to get past the construction zone, which I fully understand, but the way they had the cones set up there didn't seem like it made a lot of sense to me.
I experienced the same thing. It was terrible. I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
If I need to contact PennDOT, let me know. Let me know who to contact there. I think you guys have more clout than I do, so--
Not always.
Okay, well, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Joe Ante. I live at 730 Erland Drive. I just want to voice a point of view. They want to tear down the East York Elementary School across the street from my house. And I was told that one of the reasons, or two reasons, they wanted to tear it down. There's asbestos. So it's cheaper, they say, to tear it down because there's asbestos. But you have to mitigate the asbestos before you can tear it down. That answer doesn't fly. The second answer, reason I was told, there's bad plumbing, particularly the ladies' room, is what I've been told by some of the teachers. So I had bad plumbing in my house, and I didn't tear it down. I fixed the plumbing. I was told that they tried to fix the plumbing, and they weren't able to fix it, so they want to tear the school down. And again, if they're going to tear the school down, they still would have to repair the plumbing that's supplying in the ground to the building. Now, I don't know if they meant sewer. I don't know if they meant water supply, but the bottom line is, these are the two reasons I was told they would have tear the school down because of asbestos and plumbing. Other than that, there's nothing wrong with that building. It looks like a school. It is a school. I've been living here for five years. I enjoy looking out and seeing a building that looks like a school. Because according to the plans, the building they want to build looks like a restaurant at a shopping center. And I get that. That could work for the education of the future, because it seems like the pastime of a society today is shopping and eating. And I don't understand that they want to tear a building down. It's already there. It works. It's been working. And the building they want to build looks like a restaurant at a shopping center. And I just want to bring that to your attention, that myself and other residents in the neighborhood were against the building being torn down. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Excuse me? The topic I want to discuss is old business on the agenda. Do I do this now or when it comes up on the agenda?
Now.
You can do it now.
Yep, sure.
Okay, name and address.
Jason Shields, 3534 Druck Valley Road. So I'm here to discuss the letter we got last week, two weeks ago, about being mandated to hook into the new public water line on Druck Valley Road. So I know as a township, you have a legal obligation to provide residents with access to potable water. So you can do that in many ways. One of those ways is permitting residents to drill wells to get access to potable water. And you've done that. We all have wells sitting back here in this corner that have been tested, are not contaminated, and work just fine. So what you're forcing us to do is spend literally thousands of dollars to hook into a public water line that we don't need. The other thing that kind of bothers me is the reason this water line got run is to support a neighborhood on a neighboring township, not our township, Halem Township. Yet, we are being forced to hook into this water line. So I just want your comments and your reason why you think we should spend thousands of dollars to do something we don't need. There are plenty of people on Druck Valley Road that can't afford to spend thousands of dollars for a service they do not need. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that. Mike Adams, 3420 Druck Valley Road. So I contacted the office here, and I talked to Mark, Mr. Mark Hutchinson, and I was told that we're supposed to hook up to it because of a deal that was made in the 80s to pay off $1.5 million. How you guys couldn't pay off $1.5 million in 40 years is insane to me. Also, the Mount Zion Road extension for the water main goes, was supposed to run to a new neighborhood down there. So anything coming off of that would be another project, which I'm pretty sure that the trailer park, all that lawsuits and everything that happened there, had to pay for all the work to be done to go down Druck Valley Road. We can't afford it. We just bought a house. The interest rates are 7%, okay? I have to get a roof, windows, siding. I have to keep buildings up, and you want me to put a water service into my house? That's almost $8,000, okay? I don't know what the $1,500 is for. That's another scam to me. You want us to bring $1,500 down and then also pay a plumber and get permits and all that other stuff. We shouldn't have to pay for that. If you want to run a curb box for future use, sure. I do this stuff for a living. I know everything about it. I run water, gas, everything. So I think it's ridiculous. We just bought the house in May. For us to get this letter without any warning, we already got a letter from York Water saying it was an optional. Now we get a letter from you guys saying that it's mandatory, and we have six months to do it. And this is America. We need a chance. We need a choice. This is like forceful thinking. That's all I got.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board this evening? Anybody online that would like to address the board? All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to our engineering reports.
I'm Sherri Wolf with Buchard Horn. I'm here filling in for Diana Young this evening, and she previously sent you the progress report for the last period, and I was just wondering if anybody had any questions.
Questions?
None.
Thank you.
Okay.
I told you it'd be easy. John?
I don't really have any additions to my report, but for the benefit of the citizens here about the suburban school, on Thursday, October 3rd, the zoning hearing board will be having a zoning hearing to discuss zoning relief that the school board needs, so they may be want to be aware of that. It would be an opportunity for them to voice concerns about the school in that location. And I heard the gentleman about the plumbing and the asbestos, but that's probably not part of this discussion. But the fact that they're going to add additional parking and traffic and those kinds of things are certainly, will be discussed at that meeting.
So I would like to talk about this briefly. So I'll read out of your report, John, the application of the New East York Intermediate School. York Suburban School District will be heard for variances. From the terms of Section 325-116.T of the Township Zoning Ordinance regarding parking within the front yard, Section 325-114, minimum parking spaces requirements for an elementary or middle school, and Sections 325-105H to allow an animated sign to display school events and information. The property is located at 701 Erland Drive, York, Pennsylvania, in the small lot, single-family residential R7 zoning district. Just my personal opinion, the township should be opposing these because we have not seen plans yet for what this school is going to look like and what the impact is to our community. I'd like to hear from my fellow board members, but I think an animated sign in the middle of a small residential zoning district is not appropriate. And I'm not sure what the setbacks are and what the parking requirements are going to do to encroachment upon the residents of the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, I share your concerns with regard to all of three of those zoning variances or ordinance exceptions that the applicant is applying. We've heard about this plan, but we haven't seen the plan exactly. So, and I think, too, that we ought to have the Township Representative, the zoning hearing board, to oppose those three things until we see a plan.
Chairman, may I add something to my--
Just hang on a minute and let us have a discussion here first.
Then one more point that he, that gentleman brought to my attention, one more point to make about--
Make your point briefly.
Thank you. So my understanding that the school property behind the school are the soccer fields and playground. It's open to the public. You can walk through. You can ride your bike. There's a parking lot back there. My understanding that neighbors' children do use the playground area after school. I know I ride my bike through the back part of it. My understanding is that where that area is, that when they built that school, 1957, I believe, they managed a natural waterway in that area. There's like a creek. And if you're on Haynes Road, you will see that creek. And then if you were to take that creek, you would go onto Erland Drive, you'll see the storm drains that go and fill that creek. Then, of course, it's all covered in. And when you see certain areas of that neighborhood, there are vacant lots. And there's a reason there's vacant lots, because you can't build a house on top of a reconditioned water control, whatever you want to call it, that they did. And that would include this back property where the school is. If they're going to put whatever there, they could have the potential of future sinkholes. I just want to bring that to your attention.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're having a specific discussion about the engineer's report with the items that are going to the zoning hearing board. There will be plenty of time for those discussions as we get further--
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the zoning hearing board as regards the East York Intermediate School?
I'd be happy to agree with the chairman's comments. I think specifically the request for an animated sign tells me that whoever thinks this plan is a good plan is not thinking and has no understanding of where they're talking about putting up an animated sign. I think the, so the zoning issues only are the things that we can speak to next Thursday. And I agree that the township should do whatever the township can do, and I will personally do whatever I can do at that meeting.
I agree 100%. 100% agree.
Mark, you're going to be there to represent the township?
I will be.
Our position is we're opposing these changes. Thank you.
Just so that we're all clear, because on my three years in the zoning hearing board, I heard it over and over again, you have to remember that the zoning hearing board is a legal proceeding, and legal arguments are really the only arguments that the zoning hearing board is technically supposed to listen to. But we have good ones in this case, because, and it's not strictly legal, but if you, if a lot of people go in there with all kinds of other articles that aren't on, arguments that aren't on topic, it doesn't help, really. There'll be plenty of opportunities if they ever get to the point of showing a plan to us of what they want to do, then we have opportunities to have all kinds of input.
Just, I wanted to interject just a quick moment. I'm sure that the board is aware that it is at the planning commission level. Planning commission has seen iterations of the plan to date. They are tentatively on the schedule for the October planning commission meeting, and that would be somewhat dependent on what the decisions are at the zoning hearing board. But I just wanted to make the board aware that plans have been presented to the planning commission to date. They have made no recommendation.
Okay. And I want to emphasize that last word, recommendation. Planning commission is a recommending body. This board is the approval body. We have not seen anything, and I do not want the township to be supporting a change that we have not seen.
Absolutely. I'm just making the board aware that the process has begun, and they are going to the zoning hearing board, asking for relief, because they otherwise couldn't meet the ordinance requirements.
There's also a zoning item on here for a variance for a recreational vehicle in the front yard. I think just my personal opinion is we have been very selective in any time that we have supported a change like that. I think the last time was a severely autistic child that had a vehicle that was used for support on a daily basis, and we allowed that to be parked in the driveway because of how that was being used on a daily basis to provide that type of medical support for an individual. I think it's few and far between that we like to support variances for vehicles in the front yard just because they want to. All right, then, let's move on. Next, we have our consent agenda, items A, B, C, and D. Are there any items on here that any of you gentlemen would like to have removed for further discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Subdivisions and land development, Land Development 2024-0002, Shiny Shell Car Wash, 3021 East Market Street.
Good evening to the Board of Supervisors. This is a project that you've seen as a conditional use. This is now the land development plan from that conditional use approval granted by the Board of Supervisors. As you indicated, at 3021 East Market Street. We do have representation tonight from the consultant, Panoni. We have Ms. Allison Hanna here, and Mr. Nick Ord representing Coldwater Development for the car wash. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to the consultant and the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here before you this evening. As mentioned, my name is Nick Ord. I'm with Coldwater Development, or the parent company of Shiny Shell Car Wash. Since we last met with this board back in March for the conditional use process, we've been working with township staff and with the planning commission through the land development process. We've, I just want to commend the both township staff, Mr. Luciani, Mr. Hillman. They've been very helpful, as well as the planning commission. We've gotten great feedback and been able to implement some of that feedback into our plan and our design, and been a collaborative process along the way. I'm, well, I think just kind of as a overview, I don't know if we're able to pull up the land development plan. Thank you. Great. Yeah, thank you.
We'll wake it up. There we go.
There it goes. Just as a reminder, the proposed development is at 3021 East Market Street, where currently the Barnhart Inn is located there. We're proposing to demolish and construct a fully automated shiny shell car wash facility. That facility would be not open 24 hours a day, would be open kind of business operating hours. Typically, we're open 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at night. And I know we've been through this before, so I'm happy to go through any other introductions or give any other explanations. I'll also turn it over to Allison to run through anything, but before I do, just if there was any questions at all on any of the operations or anything of our business that I could answer before I turn it over to Allison here to run through some more of the technical plan stuff.
Just curious, when is the busiest time usually and day of the week for the car wash typically?
Yeah, typically, our busiest day of the week is Saturday, Saturday afternoon. So usually, I'd call that from like 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. is our busiest day, Saturdays and Sundays. And then during the week, we kind of have, I guess, a little bit of a bell curve, but yeah, typically, our busier hours are from noon to noon to 3:00 or noon to 4:00, so--
You're just trying to figure out when you can go, right?
When's the off time?
Yeah, exactly. Morning is a great off time. Yeah.
I was thinking more for traffic, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sure. I'm sure.
All right. Yeah, so I'll touch, since you mentioned traffic, we, since this is on East Market Street, that it's a PennDOT roadway, so we have already gone through. We're pretty much, we just have a couple comments left to address with PennDOT, so then we can get this permit issued for this driveway. But as Nick alluded, the plan is pretty much the same from when you guys saw it, the conditional use. There's just a couple tweaks that were added, and then there are additional waivers that we are requesting just because of just some of the site constraints that we were having and just some, like, including the secondary access that is required by the ordinance. It's just really hard to meet, and we have tried to make headway with some of the neighboring property owners, and it's just come up empty. So I'm happy to touch through those seven waivers if you'd like to, if you haven't had a chance to read through them, but you just let me know.
So I do have a question about the two points of access.
Of course.
The Home Depot property, is that elevation related?
Yeah, so there's not a lot of distance between where, let's see if I can do this. Yeah, so that property is kind of over here. So where we would connect is kind of like back here in this corner, and there is a large elevation difference that would make it like a 17% slope for that driveway to happen. And in addition to that, mature woodlands would have to be torn down, so not only put in that road, but to make the grades connecting into existing happen, which--
Look less like mature-- Look less like mature woodlands and more like scrub.
It is, it was scrubby, but it is, it's still important part of.
So, yeah, I drove back there today just to take a look.
Yeah, it's not pretty, but.
It does seem that if you brought something around the back and extended the grade out, that you would probably be able to do that. Was Home Depot opposed to having another point of access back there into that parking lot?
Yeah, I'll chime in there. As we've started on the process, we've been trying to make contact with neighbors. I can talk about the ones we have been able to make contact with. We've never been able to make successful contact with Home Depot Corporation, with the right people that needed to, that wanted to have a discussion about access. You know, we've reached out to who we can find and contacts that we've tried to work through, through, you know, who may know some of their real estate people. But again, part of our concern has been the physical differences in the elevation there, along with that.
The other people that you've talked to were Firehouse Shops and Verizon.
Yeah, so Firehouse Shops, to us, seemed like it was the most feasible, I guess, from an access perspective. And where we were trying to look at connecting with Firehouse Shops. Let's see if I can do the zoom again.
Right where the dumpsters are at the back end of their parking lot.
Exactly, yep. If you went there, which is right about here on our plan. It would present some traffic flow challenges. But that aside, the conversations we've had with that owner, they are, they do not want a cross-access there. They have concerns about either needing to relocate their dumpster, potentially losing parking. They have parking out along there that they use for that shopping center on both sides, and just the impact that has to their business. We also explored maybe more of a, we thought there was enough space per kind of some conversations with the township engineer to maybe do like enough width for a one lane of traffic around the dumpster, where we could leave the dumpster in place and use this more as kind of like a gated-off emergency-type, you know, exit from either side. And again, our neighbor there was not, was not in favor of that idea, not, really, they're not interested in trying to grant us a access there. And then on the Verizon side, we haven't, same kind of thing there, trying to work with Verizon Corporation. We haven't had really much luck in being able to make contact with the right people to talk about an additional access. There's, you know, their building is kind of right up against the property line that you can see there. So there's not a lot of places that we could connect through. One that we have talked about is back here, but we've got some, obviously some grade there that would have to be dealt with. But yeah, that's, it's been a challenge to make contact with, you know, these big national corporations and getting the right folks and making any headway from that perspective.
Who is the property directly behind you?
That's, I'm forgetting who owns that right now, but it's.
Your container?
I believe so, yes. We can, here, I can look back on the other plan.
Just lost it. That is not your container, Shannon Dua.
It could be like a holding company for the land there, because I know that they had, your container has about a 50-foot wide strip that comes out to Market Street from the back end of your property. And before, I'd want to just grant a variance on, I mean, a waiver, excuse me, thank you. Before, I'd want to grant a waiver on two points of access, because it is, for the safety of the public, I would want to explore every option, not just the ones that are convenient.
Can I add something to that, Mark? So one thing that we did also talk about in our waiver request was that we clearly understand that this is for emergencies, to have this second access, and we understand that. And one thing that Shiny Shell can do is they can shut off the conveyor inside of the car wash. So say there was an accident kind of over where the vacuums are, that people that are back behind there, they can still go through the car wash and get out. So that is an option. And we did put that in the waiver request, that.
I saw that.
That circulation. I know that doesn't solve all the issues, but.
Yeah, we have the, we're comfortable with the inside traffic flow of, if there is something that happens on our facility with having, you know, multiple turnaround points where we could, if we needed to, we have a, we call this our escape lane after our pay area. So if somebody can't go through the tunnel for some reason, they can exit through there if we have to. As mentioned, we can shut that down and still drive cars through here and have circulation. You know, I understand the concern, it would maybe be if there was something that happened at the driveway. I know it's more just anecdotally, we have other locations that we operate that only have one point of access, where, you know, we haven't had issues. That's not to say things can't happen, but just that we're, from a business perspective, we're comfortable being able to move people around on the site as something would get cleared there. But that's, you know, we feel we've taken the efforts and tried to find a way to get a second access. Obviously, just the shape of the site makes it really difficult to be able to fit any other kind of driveway off the road there.
Just as a point, the adjacent property owner to your north and west is Shannon Dua Mobile Company Attention Ryan LLC, according to York County.
How far back does that go?
That's your container.
Is that also your?
Yeah, I'm looking at the tax map now. It's parcel.
It goes all the way.
Yeah, it's all the way.
It is all the way back to.
That's a holding.
And I do know they have a very large basin back there on their property.
Yeah, but I'm talking about lower down, there's access to a strip of land that they have that goes all the way out to Market Street. It looks like it's 50 to 70 feet wide.
Right next to the Verizon building.
So you're saying that comes down?
No, it's one house, one lot further down.
Can we throw up the York County assessment database to show the map on the computer? Angel, that's your job, okay. No pressure. Yeah, the track in question, yeah, it has a flagpole staff, if you will, right to East Market Street, and it is one, two, three properties to the east from your track.
Correct.
Yes. Along the street, it is three parcels over. In the back, it is the adjoining parcel.
Here it comes. Use, we're going to target, wait, let me get this out here.
3021 East Market Street. 21.
It's funny, this is the 138 Mount Zion Road, all the way up.
There you go.
So we're talking about the track to the north and east. If you highlight that one, Angel, you can see the border that stretches all the way out there to East Market.
All right, just one point to your comment about mature forest back there. You're going to be removing most of that anyway for your parking lot back there.
Yeah, it's just on someone else's property for that driveway access.
Looks like they even have a highway occupancy permit on that track.
I believe they do. I think that was an intended secondary entrance for your container at one point in the past.
Or is it for that house and the border isn't on?
Just so we're following along, or maybe I can't, sorry, because maybe if you have control, we're talking, if I'm looking, is it next to the, I see where the track goes and comes around. It's that what connects down to the.
Angel, can you drop it down a little bit and then slide it a little bit to the, yeah, no, other way, other way, right about there. Okay, good.
If you take your, yeah, take your cursor to the, move it to the top.
Yeah, just right there, yep.
No, just a little bit higher with the cursor, with, now click it.
Yep.
That's the track.
Got it. The, I guess the questions I have in my mind of whether that's going to be feasible for us to be able to try to build and connect behind those other lots and down. And, you know, what that would, what the board is going to look for there, is that a fully paved road, two-way access? I would imagine that the residential to the, that's immediately surrounding that, the lots in between, may have some concerns with that, but those are, you know, some of the questions that are going through my mind, whether, if that's going to be feasible for us or not.
And fair enough, those are good questions, yeah.
So, I don't think that we can answer that for you. I just don't want to be told that all avenues have been explored if there are avenues that haven't been explored.
Yeah, understood, fair enough.
I mean, at one level, to the applicant's defense, we have a property there, a hotel, that doesn't have a second exit either. But the use is changing, and this is more dynamic of an automobile or automotive flow. So it does make sense for us to try to explore to have that.
Only, it's probably less than two-thirds of the depth. About two-thirds of the depth to the back of the motel. The parking lot is only about halfway back. So they have a large parking area in the back there where the trees are, so you're a lot further in with a lot more cars.
Absolutely, the volume of traffic is going to be.
Yeah, I, for one, would be very hesitant to vote in favor of that waiver without some kind of additional accommodation for safety.
Because the other thing that I noticed is that we're talking about reducing the throat length of the in-and-out movement at the front end of the property. So if we're not having a second exit and we're restricting the size of the throat of the entrance to the property, they're both kind of headed the wrong direction.
So I want to comment on that. So although we're asking for the waiver of that access drive throat length, and I had asked John to give some clarification on this too, that the Springinsberry Township definition for a low-volume driveway is the same exact definition that PennDOT uses. So I don't know why we were being classified as a medium volume per Springinsberries. So that's why we were asking for the waiver, but it seems to me, per the definitions, they are the same for low volume, for per PennDOT and low volume per Springinsberry.
PennDOT is considered a slow volume?
And PennDOT has considered us low volume ever since the start of our scoping, all the way through approvals. Because the threshold is 750 vehicles, and this site is only going to get half of that. So I think it was, I don't have it written down, but it was in our traffic impact study report that it's about 450.
Are we bumping up against a time constraint for this?
We are not. They provided us a time extension.
Maybe while John is looking at.
Because it does say for low-volume access drives, and I know we define it in there, but for low, it shall be a minimum of 20 feet. And there's a second part, says for low-volume access drives shall be a minimum 50 feet or as determined by a queuing analysis in the traffic impact study. And I'm not sure if your queuing was more than 50 feet coming out of there. That, I'm not 100% certain. But we did, I'm fairly certain when we went through, we did adjust the traffic volumes from PennDOT's numbers. But I'm still looking to double-check that.
Well, one comment, I've worked with Home Depot and represented them for the last 25 years. So the answer would have been no, had you been able to reach the right person.
Thanks, Bob.
But Home Depot and Verizon are very difficult because of large corporations. In the case of the paper company behind them, they're local, aren't they still? I think that's still locally owned. Are they not? That was so. A Canadian company now, sorry, never mind.
Thank you. I guess, I guess the one other, you know, thought that as we've been trying to navigate this, I can understand why the requirement is there in this particular use. And a lot of our neighboring uses immediately to the west of us are multiple, multi-big tenant operations, right? Home Depot or Firehouse Shops, where you have multiple tenants in there. We're classified as a low volume. We, you know, we're not going to have that nearly as much traffic as a lot of those that have those required to accesses. And so our, you know, our ask or our thought is that you would consider that waiver. Just that we, we're not concerned about the flow or the safety there. It's, you know, if there's an accident on East Market Street, there's lots of places that exist in the township where if there was an accident, a driveway would be blocked for a short period of time. And that's our ask. I think we're talking about a very small chance here. And, you know, as we're trying, what we've worked through to this point and trying to really make the property work with what we have is, you know, what's proposed in front of you is, I'll say, our best effort. We're certainly willing to go and talk to this neighbor. And, I mean, I don't want to speak for engineering from a standpoint of what we can do, but, you know, I don't know if there's an ability to. you know, I don't know if there's an ability to have that be a condition of, of the plan if there were to be a, a action taken tonight that, that's conditioned and we can come and report on that and, and discuss that and, and take every effort that we can to make that other connection happen. That would be my, I guess, my question and/or request.
So mechanically, how would that work? I guess we would just deny the waiver and they'd have a plan that they need to get a, a second entrance, or no? How would we do that? What would be the mechanics to give them time to explore a second entrance, exit?
Well, if you're going to think through this, you're going to go through the waivers first.
Right.
My, my suggestion would be you approve the plan.
Could approve the plan, just hypothetically here because there's other issues.
No, no, I get it, can you approve the plan and then have, have the waiver come back at a later?
Do you table that, well, you can't approve the plan?
I'm just wondering if we can, if the, you can approve the plan conditioned upon?
Best efforts to connect, to create.
Who's best effort?
Yeah, then that, that's it's either that or deny that waiver. Approve the plan without approving that waiver.
You could modify the waiver.
What would we have to modify it to say?
Conditioned upon, we approve this, conditioned upon, we approve this waiver conditioned upon the second entrance or access.
Which is also what you can deny.
If there's a secondary access, they don't need a waiver.
Well, and I guess my question is, so would it be that secondary access, like a full-blown, like, two-way? That we would then have to get another HOP in that property owner's name at that en, entrance exit? Or would it be emergency?
Well, so I was looking at the deeper view of that track and that track to the north of you is connected to the backside of the, what is that, the warehouse logistics? Is that Stag Industrial Holdings? So they do have a connection. So if you connect to your neighbor to the north, then, and, and that, I admit, that's a long stretch. You have to just connect to get their permission, then you have a second entrance.
Where, where is the connection?
Right there. If I'm reading the Ewer County map correctly, there is a connection between the two property lines right there, like an emergency exit.
I'm not sure that's not gated.
Things to work through.
Yeah, I would think that it would be.
Bottom line, if that's a solution, you don't need a new HOP, that's what I'm getting at.
To clarify, you were saying to connect and go north on the, on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if they'd like that idea, but.
That's further than going across and out to Market Street.
But then you have an HOP here you know. Two HOPs. There, we're, yeah, back to the question, I guess.
So if we just remove the consideration of that one waiver right now?
Can they bring it back and waive the second entrance, say, can they come back, James, and say, we've approved the plan, but either postpone that waiver for them to bring it back, which means you don't have an approved plan, or you approve the plan but deny that waiver, and then they have a plan that they're stuck with until they get that second entrance?
I'm, I'm just wondering if, if there's a, if there's a way, because if we split the preliminary and the final plan.
But then we'd still have to go back to the planning commission.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to navigate the.
I, I guess just based on the information we've provided, if the, if the board would, would consider voting in approval of that waiver, but we, I, I, I get what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, who's, who's best efforts are those, are those going to be? That was kind of more what I was thinking is if, for the, for mechanically, and, and Mr. Solicitor, I know you, you're, you're trying to figure that out, but if it was a, if the board would consider approving the waiver and we, we take efforts, the best efforts and report back on our conversations with that owner and can come back and report here is, is my ask, is, is that as a condition unless of a, coming back with another waiver request?
I'll, I'll just chime in there and say that would be a request that I would vote against.
Okay.
But I, I think we're, you know, we're trying to do everything we possibly can to help a developer, which I'm fine with, but from what I've heard, this needs a, a little more comprehensive a solution.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not comfortable. Here's my suggestion, this, this gets, you don't take action on this tonight. I, I'm certainly happy to look through a modification of the waiver or a, or a conditional approval of the waiver to see what that would look like for next meeting. And, and that also affords you time to look at other second access options. But I, yeah, I'm just not comfortable doing this on the fly because that's, that's not.
And I think there's just a lot of variables too that come in with it, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, that, that's my suggestion, is you, is you vetted this, table it, we'll put it to the next, next meeting and, and see what kind of solution we can come up with.
But before, before we, sorry, if I, if I could just ask if while we're here, if, if there are any other questions on the, any of the other waivers, I know, just so that if we're coming back again, that we are making sure that we are addressing any other concerns at the same time.
So, I'm sorry, what was the resolution, John, on access drive?
Looking at their queue analysis and their queue analysis says that no more than one car would be queued up. And the threshold is set less than 750 vehicles per day. And I have a summary here and I think it's 421 in, so they would be under even, they would be a low volume by, by our classification.
So they would not need acc?
They would have sufficient, because it's 421 in, 421 out, so that's 421 vehicle trips. And in and out is, so, so they would, they would be classified, that's why PennDOT classified them as a low-volume driveway.
So they don't need that modification?
Correct. Sorry for the according to fortunately a.
You don't need modification number four.
Right, you could pull that.
I don't think I had any other issues. Don? Bob, Charles?
I don't think I had any issues and also just, you know, I'm not also expecting them to have if they get a second entrance, a paved thing, it's more for emergency purposes, consistent with our other development plans, so, to give them direction there.
Just so the applicant knows, the supervisors do meet twice in the month of October.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
So I guess you need a motion to table?
I guess I have one more question related to if we're not going to have it be like a full-blown, that it could be emergency. Technically, we have grade that we could put just an emergency, like, kind of almost riprap between our property and Verizon that, I mean, wouldn't really necessarily have their permission, but in an emergency situation, I mean, people go wherever they want. They could go over there, I'm just throwing it out there. No, okay.
No, my, my head shaking is, is please don't respond. That, that is a conversation that you can have with Verizon.
Understood.
There's also the hot air balloon solution, no, nevermind.
All right, so, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to LD 2024-0002, I move to table this action to allow the applicant time to explore that second entrance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any communication from supervisors this evening?
I have two things, first, just an update for the rest of the board concerning the Yalfer meeting last week. At a previous meeting, the Yalfer Commission had unanimously, unanimously approved the hire of a strategic plan consultant, helped develop a strategic plan for them. In our materials for last week's meeting, I learned that there had been an initial kickoff meeting that involved the chief and his staff and a representative from Manchester Township and a representative from Spring Garden Township. So obviously, at the, at the meeting, I posed the question, who made the decision to exclude Springinsbury Township from that conversation? And I got my answer and that individual did apologize, and so we were back on the good graces and allowed to attend the future meetings of the strategic plan consultant. Second thing, I wanted to just ask a question or maybe ask Mark to get back to us on the tax exemption we approved earlier. We had talked about this before, I think in terms of the volunteer tax credit. And my understanding of how that would work, it was like an annual approval process. When I was looking at the materials for this particular exemption, it looks like the county granted exemption to that property, which makes me wonder if the use of that property ever changes, what's the mechanism that the county uses, or is there a control in place to make sure that exemption gets removed?
I will check with the county, but I believe every two years, the individual has to get reapproval, if you will, through the Department of Veteran Affairs.
I would just feel better if we knew there was a process.
But I will check with the county to see if there's a mechanism there, double checking every two years.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
Anybody else? Solicitors' report.
I have no further updates to my report, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Managers' report, Mark?
I do not have anything to add to my written report.
I did have a question, there seem to be a number of issues that don't have updates, number of items on here that the last entry is, we'll have a follow-up meeting in July on one of them, but there's no update on it. There are several like that. Are there, did we not have those meetings? Maybe that's the update?
What? Subject?
Uh, let's see, comprehensive plan. The last update was work session was held on June 12th, Marion and I will have a follow-up meeting in July.
We've had several follow-up meetings since then, but there's nothing really to report other than we've had to follow up.
About the RACP, any new update there?
Tetra Tech and.
We, we're in high gear given them information that they're requesting, but there's really nothing newsworthy on that front to report to the board other than submitting information that they're requesting.
So it looks like on August 8th, you met with their representatives, they went ever, over everything we need to do over the next few months, so are we 20%?
We're doing.
50%? Can we quantify how far we are with the stuff, or is it, we, it just, it has to take time?
We give the information that they ask and we have submitted tremendous amounts of information. Then just yesterday, they scheduled a meeting in Octo, early October to go over that information that we've provided and then come up with what's missing yet.
If you wouldn't mind, could you just throw that in there, like, you know, continue to give them information, meeting scheduled for early October?
Sure.
Would be, just so that we know that it just didn't get forgotten.
And I don't doubt that that was not forgotten, but I'd like to monitor our progress on our end too, because they kind of threw the ball at us on August 8th, said this is what you need to do and like to see where we're at.
Yeah. I think that was the only comment I had. Anybody else?
I'm just, I'm wondering if we want to do something, anything at all with that, the Spring Garden Bicycle Trail issue. Now, I understand it kind of fell flat, but I think they have an interim manager now. I don't know if it's worth a, a letter to them telling them that we're still interested, or telling them we're not interested, or just settling that.
I went to PennDOT's consulting engineer on that project and told them that Springinsbury is interested in whatever we need to do to make that happen. And when they're ready for that conversation with me, they're going to reach out to me.
PennDOT is?
PennDOT's consulting engineer. So I went it on my, our own, I I went to PennDOT directly and not through Spring Garden Township.
So I just wonder if we should close the loop with Spring Garden Township, one way or another?
I can do that.
I'm just one person, I don't, I just.
No, I think that, it, it's worth a phone call.
I'd do it in writing.
Okay.
I'd express.
We're giving you more work to do, Mark.
But that won't take long.
I'd express that we're still open to working with them, but, you know, let them know we're forging ahead with PennDOT directly. It's my take.
Well, I guess, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, but, Don?
Well, Mark, I assume you, you may have had some, they have an interim manager now, or an?
It, it's, I, I don't know exactly what's going on, to be honest with you. But I, I have a person I can contact there, but it's not a manager, it's an interim manager. But I can definitely reach out to that person. It's an interim manager, but I can definitely reach out to that person and let them know. If they're interested, uh, let me know. If not, we're gonna keep going with PennDOT.
Yeah, well, that's fine. And maybe, maybe it's worth waiting until there is a manager that's been there more than a day or two. I believe they did tell us they made an offer to someone, but that doesn't mean they hired him.
Anything else? All right, then, moving on to old business, um, take these in order here. Bylaws regarding audit. We decided they can make their changes without us being involved, so we can remove that.
Yep.
I concur.
I think we had said sidewalks was going to be more encompassing than just 11th Avenue and Whiteford and the township is going to be doing a review of that in conjunction with places that we may have notes on, on plans.
Correct.
Adoption of new building code.
That's the meeting we had last night, building code slash fire code.
Okay, all right. You got that done already?
Hmm, I didn't see it.
Okay, volunteer fire tax credits.
I'm still waiting on information from our tax collector so I can give the board the range of what could be expected from a tax credit perspective, real estate tax credit.
It's not very many people and it's rather small amount, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. America 250 PA Celebration, uh, we have a meeting scheduled for November with?
Commissioner Wheeler will be here to present to the board at the November 20th meeting.
And the last one on here is Mount Zion Druck Valley Road Water District. So current situation, you are scheduling meetings with, uh, the water company, is that correct?
So we, we've had an initial meeting with York Water to collect information. We're awaiting information to come back from York Water related to history of the agreement, calculation of the payments and, um, what some of the provisions in there were, what they meant by that. So, um, they're getting back to us next week with that information and we plan to report out to the board the following week. Is that fair, Mark?
That is correct.
Yep, so we had that call today.
So that will be at the next meeting then, that we have that discussion?
As long as we get the information, I'm happy to, uh, Mark and I are happy to have that conversation.
And, and Mark, correct me if I misspeak here, but I walked out of the last meeting thinking that there was a loan that Springsberry Township owed money to, to York Water for this project that began. I've since learned that it's not really a loan that we owe to them. It's basically they paid for the cost of the construction back then to, to build the initial infrastructure. And on their books, they're considering every hookup or something to that effect. It was in there applies to the balance of that construction cost. So, uh, point is, all of that's internal in their books. There's nothing on our books, nor does there need to be anything on our books showing that we owe York Water Company from those construction costs. Did I summarize that fairly?
That is correct.
Okay.
We had the 1985 agreement that Springsberry Township requested the water system. And my understanding, again, this is 1985, so everyone we're talking to is no longer, or wasn't around during those times, but the township requested the water system to be installed. York Water said that they would do it on a loan that they would get on Springsberry's behalf, their own loan. 1.4 million, something along those lines. But in doing that, the township had to pass an ordinance that required anybody to connect it into that system and any extension to that system had to pay a connection fee to pay down towards York Waters' original capital investment that they put into the system at the township's request at that time. So we don't have a loan on our books that's outstanding. We just have the agreement that says that we're gonna do what I just said for any future connections, extensions to that system. But the agreement also states, they, when they want to extend the system, they, it's their system. The township doesn't and did not, in this case, request the system to be extended, nor could we have stopped it. It's their system. They can extend it at their, at their will.
Their public utility, sure.
So the 1,400, which is 1,475 now, that 1,475 comes from the customer to the township and that same 1,475 goes right to York Water to go towards this original, to pay down on the capital. We don't keep anything. So like James said, we had the meeting today. They're gonna go back. Not everybody, they needed to go back and ask, dig and find some questions and they're hoping to have the information to me by next Friday. If they do, then that'll be in time to give it to the board for the October 10th meeting.
And if we don't have all that information, then we can hopefully expect to have it at the second meeting in October.
I would, I would.
I just want everybody to understand when you can expect some answers on things.
I took off of work for this, so I lost some money today. So York sent the first letter out saying, asking if it was, saying it was optional. So they didn't even bring it up. It was the township that sent us the second letter saying that it was mandatory. So what is, because this sounds like a bunch of politics from the eighties that's not getting.
Well, and respectfully, if it's not on your book, on the township's books, why would we give you guys the money? If it's a loan only to York Water Company?
And we've contracted this loan to York Water. It sounds like it's a public company that can just extend their main anywhere and take whoever's money they want. So wherever they decide to extend the main, even out of the township apparently, they can have everybody hook up to that main and then they have to pay for it. So how is that even a thing?
Let us figure out what's going on with this. As we said, we have some meetings coming up. I don't want to have another discussion or argument here tonight because we don't have any answers for you. So when we have answers, we will have that discussion. And when we do that, then I will open up the floor for further discussion at this particular item rather than just the, um, citizen comment at the beginning of the meeting. But for tonight, it's, it's not appropriate to do that. I mean, we've already had citizens' comment. We know that we don't have information for you. We've kind of exhausted this topic for this evening. Okay, and that is the last item on the agenda, so meeting is adjourned. Thank you.